Good evening.
Welcome to the City of Douglas American Commission Meeting. This will serve as our regular meeting this outstanding day of December the 11th, 2017, and we're gonna have our invocation. Commissioner Cindy McNeil will do the introduction. Commissioner McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to introduce someone who really requires no introduction in our community. Anybody who's ever been to a Coffee High Trojan football game knows this voice, and I'll say he's a legend, I guess. My husband, my husband Brian McNeil, you know, followed you many, many places, I think, in the community, calling ball games and doing play-by-play, but have a lot of respect for you, Mr. Jimmy, and I'd like to introduce to y'all Mr. Jimmy Robertson. He's gonna give us our invocation, and I hope will say some wonderful things for us and maybe encourage our Trojans also this week.
Thank you, Cindy. I have for the past thirty-three years been the PA voice at Jodine Stadium, and over those thirty-three years, I've seen a lot of Trojan football teams. And this particular team is unique, not simply because it is playing for the state championship, but because of how it got to the state championship. This is a diverse group that is made up of people from all over this county, and particularly from our city. We're black and white, we're big and small, we're smart and maybe not quite as smart, we're talented, maybe not quite as talented. We've got, we've got everything you could ask for, but the thing that makes this team good is that they have a resolve that they're going to work together to get the job done regardless of what it takes to get it done. This is a blue-collar group that has worked hard, and they'll work as hard as they need to to get done what they have envisioned doing, and that is winning state championship. And we certainly wish them well in doing that, and as I'm sure everyone in this room does. We're extremely proud of this group, their coaching staff, and this entire community for following them so closely and being so supportive of them. And we as citizens and as a governmental body can, can learn a lot from this football team because they're a together bunch, and they pull together to get to where they are, and we look forward to what they do this coming weekend, whenever it is and wherever it is. So with that, let's pray. Almighty God, we come before you with thanksgiving for all the blessings that we who live in this city have to enjoy. We are especially grateful during this particular season of the year as we prepare to celebrate the birth of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, the Prince of Peace. This evening, we invoke your blessing on this meeting of our city commission. We are grateful for those who serve on this commission. We pray guidance for our mayor, Tony Paul. We lift up Ward One Commissioner Ed Taylor, Ward Two Commissioner Ken Tayone Durham, Ward Three Commissioner Olivia Pearson, Ward Four Commissioner Mike Gallin, Ward Five Commissioner Cindy McNeil, and Ward Six Commissioner Bob Moore. For all of these public servants, we pray that you would grant them wisdom, common sense, and good judgment that would allow them to govern well. We further pray for our city manager, Terrell Jacobs, and all other employees of our city. We pray now that all that is done here this evening will be done decently and in good order, and we offer this prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Hey, did we win the coin toss?
I was gonna say, Mr. Jacobs, you can appreciate this when I called Brother Jimmy, and I've known him as Brother Jimmy, of course, from our First Methodist Church affiliation, but I asked him to please give us the same prayer he would give, that he's given the Trojans all this time for us, because the group he described, did that not sound like us?
Oh, that's us.
A very diverse group working together. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Always shining bright.
Yes, sir.
Next, on the agenda, we have the Pledge of Allegiance, and we're gonna be joined and led in the Pledge of Allegiance by the Coffee County Navy Junior ROTC. Tonight, we have Lieutenant Junior Grade Hill and Lieutenant Junior Grade McKean. These are two of the representatives and ambassadors of Coffee High School. Next on the agenda, you see that we have the minutes, which we have already placed on the consent agenda, so if you would, please strike item number four. And additionally, would you please strike item number seven, recognition of Christmas Parade winners? And that would bring us, our next order of business is the approval of the order of the agenda.
Motion carries.
Second.
It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
All opposed? Motion carries. Outstanding. Next, we have presentation to Unison, and our city commissioner, oh, I'm sorry, our city manager will introduce.
Yeah, I'm not elected, Mayor. All right, just wanna give you some background on this and definitely allow Dr. Thomas to come up and state anything that he wishes to say. We've been embarking on the Mayor's Motorcade and also the fundraiser regards to helping with Unison as well. The Mayor's Motorcade is primarily focused on regional hospitals throughout the state of Georgia, helping those individuals who are actually under care of the state at this time, and sometimes they don't get the things that all of us take for granted around Christmas times in regards to toiletries and things of that nature, basic need things. Also, same with the Unison, they actually have quite a bit of consumers, is that the new word, that are under their care as well, so to help them in that same regard with those individuals who are dealing with whatever mental health issues that they're dealing with, same as Georgia Regional. So what we have decided for the past several years is to split those funds between Georgia Regional Hospital and the one that serves us is out of Savannah, and Unison to provide some assistance in regards to helping them with basic needs in regards to that around the holiday season, because a lot of times, these individuals don't get those needed things in that regard. So Dr. Thomas is here to receive that. I think last week, the group went up and gave the other check to Georgia Regional Hospital, I think. Wanna give a shout-out to somebody, he, he does this all the time, and we appreciate him stepping up. Believe it or not, Roger Goddard, every year goes out and solicits and gets the funds, and if it were not for Roger, we would not have the funds to give Georgia Regional and Unison. So he's a big part of this, and I wanna give him a shout-out and a round of applause for what he does. Appreciate his efforts and all that. So each year, he does that. Thank you. And Dr. Thomas, you wanna come up, and if you have anything you wanna share, you can be up there with the mayor.
Well, I want to say thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for the support you give us. We're very proud to be able to be serving the population of Coffee County and the City of Douglas. We have a lot of associations with the city and the county. In fact, police chief sits on our board, make sure that I'm a a myself, but when we're conducting our business, we also greatly appreciate the support the city is giving us, and this check, but also the kind of the ongoing support and partnership that we enjoy. People with mental health issues sometimes have to face a lot of difficulties, a lot of stigma, and I think you should all be proud of yourselves that you're offering this support to this group of the population who with our help can recover and become, you know, successful and well-functioning members of the community. So that's really what I want to say. I just wanna say thank you. It's a partnership that we value, we want to protect.
Outstanding. We're gonna take a quick picture, hopefully, and we're gonna head out. Outstanding. Thank you very much, Dr. Thomas.
One of the things, in my, in my full-time job over in my capacity with the federal government, the, the value of Unison, I mean, is unmeasurable. What they do on a day-to-day basis as far as taking care of someone with some mental disabilities, sometimes just day-to-day activities are a struggle, I mean, a real struggle. And I've been over there now for eighteen years, and just to see the amount of work that they put in, is, you have to have a heart for it. You really have to have a compassion for people, and I'm always grateful for Unison, and I think that any city or county that they're in is indebted to them for the service that they provide. I know we greatly appreciate them over there in my other capacity. Next, on the agenda are the consent agenda items, and we'll turn that over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a few items on the consent agenda, the first being the November twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen minutes, the next item being the Historic Preservation Commissioner appointments, the next item being the Douglas Coffee County Planning Commission appointments, and the next one is the Downtown Development Authority appointments, the next one is the CDV, two thousand eighteen CDV application, and the last one is the year-round rate on the residential electric.
The city manager, excuse me, the city manager has read the items placed on the consent agenda. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the work session items brought forward, and I do believe we had one item. Is that correct, city manager?
Yes, yes, sir. The first reading of the motorized car ordinance amendment.
How you doing this evening, Jerome?
I'm good, Mr. Mayor. How are you?
I'm doing well, doing well.
This will be the first reading. You don't do anything tonight. We'll have, you'll take action on this at our next meeting on December the twenty-eighth. Be it our day by the Mayor Board of Commissioners, City of Douglas, Georgia, in regular session, assembled pursuant law authority, traffic provisions, City of Douglas, Georgia hereby amended and stands amended by adding the following: Motorized cars registration and registration application shall be accounted by a fee of fifteen dollars for one year and thirty dollars for three years. No registration fee shall be prorated. Each registration will expire on December thirty-one of each year. A three-year registration will be valid for three years and will expire on December thirty-one of the third calendar year. Often read for the first time in a regular meeting, the Mayor Board of Commissioners, City of Douglas, Georgia on December eleventh, two thousand seventeen, and like I said, we'll have a second reading on December twenty-eighth.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have staff comments. How you doing this evening?
How you doing? Good. How are y'all?
Doing well.
I have a couple of things I just want to remind everybody about. We are still currently taking applications for students in grades nine through twelve for the Mayor's Youth Council. This will be our, our first year, our inaugural session, so we encourage any students in grades nine through twelve at the high school, CCA, homeschool students, you know, if they're interested, please give us a call, and we'd like to have them on board with us this year. On Saturday, December the sixteenth, we will have the community toy distribution at Central Square Complex from nine AM to twelve noon, and that is for the people who have been pre-approved. Now, if someone still would like to get on that list, they need to contact us, and we will see what we can do, but we cannot promise that all, all of the kids will be, be sourced for this year, we'll be able to. December the twenty-second and the twenty-fifth, city offices will be closed for the Christmas holiday, and on December the twenty-eighth, we'll have the city commission meeting at seven PM. Also, the Douglas Police Department is still selling Christmas ornaments. If anybody would like to purchase a twenty-dollar Christmas ornament from the police department, those proceeds will go towards the community toy drive, and we are really pleased with our results this year, I believe. And also, Waste Industries will be closed on Christmas Day, so if your, if your trash pickup is normally on that Monday, they will be picking up trash Tuesday through Friday that week, and they will also pick up recycling and garbage on Friday. And that's it.
Outstanding. Thank you very much. Excuse me. At this time, I will entertain comments from our commission, since Commissioner McNeil, let's let you go first.
Oh, okay.
You look all Christmasy.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Gosh, we've got so much to, you know, so much to be thankful for during this holiday season, I think, and I know without, without sounding redundant or without being repetitious here, we've all got a lot of things to look forward to, I think. Trying to be optimistic and be encouraging here about our Lee County, our trip over there and the outcome, so we, we want to say nice things and, and be positive about that and wish for the best there. There's so many things going on in the community that are related to Christmas and the holidays that I, I just wanna mention a couple things to everybody and invite you out. If you haven't already been invited, I know this Sunday evening, First Methodist Church is having a Christmas cantata, and they will be going together with the First Methodist Church in Hazelhurst, I believe it is, is that right? And so we're looking forward to that. We, we had just a sneak peek Sunday morning, and it's just gonna be wonderful.
We also have the Coffee High Choir.
Oh, show choir's gonna be there too then, so wow. That will be great. There's a cookie sale afterwards that'll benefit missions and everything, I think, so please come to that. I see first here on the Friday facts that First Baptist Church is having a candlelight service the twenty-fourth, and there's several of us ladies going up to hear our own local Jennifer Nettles on the twentieth. She's gonna be in Atlanta, so if you don't already have your tickets for that, I would encourage everybody to, to go and hear her. And again, I think we have one more meeting between now and Christmas. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, um...
Is that?
Is it after the holiday? So this is it then, I guess. Yes, this is it. So again, wishing all of you Merry Christmas, and we'll see you before the New Year.
Outstanding. Thank you very much, Commissioner. We're gonna save the anniversary commissioner last.
Oh, that's wise. Spare you.
Commissioner Durham, how you doing?
I'm great. How about you?
Tell, tell me what's on your mind.
Good evening, everybody. I had a chance to go with Mr. Roger Goddard and Mr. Casey Wright to Savannah with the, with the Georgia Regional Hospital of Savannah, the Mayor's Motorcade, and it was truly a great success to see, you know, all the different cities and counties there, representing their cities, and it was a great support, and I really enjoyed myself. And also, I had a great time singing, being a guest soloist with Mr. John, Mr. John Glosson at his concert that he had a couple of weeks, I mean, a week ago or something like that, and I truly enjoyed myself there. And also, my hats go off to our police department, Chief Counsel Ossen, Deputy Chief, and also to the power department with this toy drive. I tell you, in public information, I, my hats go off towards all of those and all of the agencies that help service this toy drive. My hats go off to all of them. I told them in one of the meetings, because the mayor gave me the task, you know, to, you know, be over there, you know, to oversee it, I told them that we gotta have faith this year. And with the faith that we had this year, it really turned out to be a tremendous amount that we have raised, and we're not able to service every child, but we'll be able to service those children that fill out their applications. And like Ms. Dale say, Ms. Blundell, Dale say that you can fill out your application because it is a deadline, so you need to get your application filled out if your child, you know, if you're qualified to register for one. And also, the toy drive will be December the sixteenth, nine AM to twelve PM at Central Square Gym. And it is a great, I mean, it has been a great task to oversee this with them, and you know, I enjoyed the meetings, I enjoyed, you know, just sitting there, but what's gonna, what is gonna make it all so special is when we see those children faces when they receive those toys, and that's gonna bring a smile on my face. I, me and Deputy Chief, we went to Walmart Distribution, different places, asking for donations and toys, and I tell you, the City of Douglas is a blessed city, and that's about all I have to say, and also Merry Christmas to everyone, and this is a season to be jolly. This is a season of giving. If you know families that don't, that don't have and are less fortunate, you know, less fortunate to have and to give a Christmas, be a blessing. This is a season of giving, and so we ask that you be a blessing, because Jesus was a blessing to us. He was born, He died, and He rose for us, so we can be a blessing to others. That's all I have to say. Merry Christmas.
Outstanding. Thank you very much. Also, I wanna make a little quick note here. The Mayor Pro temp is actually not here because of official city business, and Commissioner Pearson is a little under the weather, and that's the reason for their absence. Now, 'cause I'm still trying to give the anniversary commissioner a little time. Commissioner Gallin, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Like I said, my congratulations to our Coffee County Trojans for the great job that they're doing so far.
Yes!
Greatly looking forward to next Friday night as they continue. We expect their streak. While this has been following the Trojans, y'all know that the last two opponents they faced were one-loss teams, as is Lee, as is Lee County, so I think we got a little unfinished business to fit, to finish in Leesburg. We're gonna find out who the real Trojans are. I believe it's gonna be the Coffee County Trojans.
Believe it.
Also, I'd like to extend my congratulations to the Georgia Bulldogs for pulling off the SEC Championship. A lot of people were pulling against the Dogs, but many of you know they're led by a freshman quarterback, Jake Fromm, from our region as well, Houston County, and I think he's done us all proud. He made the All-SEC freshman team and All-American freshman team. And we also have a Buckus Award winner, which for those of you that follow college football know that that is for the nation's best linebacker, that will be Roquan Smith. He is the first player in Georgia history to win that award. He is from Macon County, another homegrown Georgia boy, and he was also voted to the All-American team. But look forward to seeing what they're gonna do against those Sooners on January first in the Rose Bowl. I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, hope everybody will have a safe and enjoyable holiday, and take some time to spend with your family. I know a lot of, a lot of people talking about those Trojans. We had some people coming in, a wife, my wife's friend that she went to school with flew in from California to watch that game. Another friend of ours flew in from Utah to watch that game, so we've got a lot of people that are, that are backing these young men. Very impressive what they've done, look forward for them to continue with the hard work they put in, and I think we'll see that this coming up Friday. That's all I have, Mayor.
Outstanding. Thank you very much. Now, for the commissioner that's been married forty years, forty, forty, four-oh, four-oh, and he actually think that we're gonna celebrate him, we actually doing this for Miss Bobby Jean, you hear me? Because that's who we own, you hear me? We own Miss Bobby Jean team. We show hope you come expensive and correct. Commissioner Tate?
Good evening, Mayor.
How you doing?
I'm doing great. How about yourself?
I'm doing all right, but you don't look broke. You ain't spending that much money.
Oh, yeah.
You spending?
Oh, yeah. Yes, check my account. That's, good evening, good evening, good evening, good evening. First of all, let me say I would like to wish my wife forty years of marriage, nobody but God, you know, because it took him to make, make it happen. Every day been sunshine, but we been there, forty years, forty years. Shawty sweet, love you, always will. Yes, sir.
Little Casanova.
Oh, Casanova, what a student.
Yes, sir. But on, on another note, on Friday, had an opportunity to hit the road with my family. It's been a while since we had gotten together, you know, everything, and going to see those Trojans at the Mercedes Dome. I had told my son, you know, hey, we gonna spend time together, you know, and it was great, it was great. And what, what, what I, what's so exciting about is just seeing so many Coffee County peoples coming together, you know, as one, you know, going to support those mighty Trojans, you know, everything. We was, we was headed up towards McCray, talking with my dad. He's ninety-five years old, you know, he, most of the time, he wants to ride with us. Found out the charter bus was going, you know, he told us, you know, he was not gonna ride with us, he was gonna ride on the charter bus because the charter bus were more comfortable than the cars.
They take better care of us, okay?
That's it.
They're very accommodating.
Yes, yes. So everybody was excited about that, you know, the, the grandkids, the brothers and sisters and all, you know, we was, you know, excited about him going to the Mercedes, you know, everything, because, you know, that was his first time, first time, you know, everything, and him being that age, you know, and all, we just excited, we just excited, you know, but who knows? It didn't turn out that, but the Lord knows what best for the overall thing, you know, and all. But let me say to the old Trojan, going to Lee County?
Yes.
We gonna do it up. So Trojan, let's make it happen. We gonna make it happen. On the last note, Merry Christmas to each and every one of y'all, and may God bless you. Merry Christmas.
Outstanding. Outstanding. My comments are as follows. First of all, I wanna give a, a very special thank you to Commissioner Durham. Assigned him the task of taking care of the Christmas spectacular, the Mayor's Motorcade, all this stuff here, and he was all in. He was all in, and him working with the staff and everyone, I think that, that was a combination that provided us some success. I think that I was really, really pleased with, and I'm very thankful for you, very thankful. Good job. The next thing is, our Christmas tree is actually four, four foot tall, and every day I see pictures, somebody went down there and took some pictures, so the community is really enjoying the Christmas tree, and that's what it's all about. That's what it's all about, getting out fellowship and having a good time. We also have in the audience the commander of post five fifteen, Mr. Jerome Loving. He's asked us to make sure that the citizens are fully aware of wreaths across America. They're actually gonna have a program at twelve o'clock this Saturday at the Douglas Cemetery. Thus far, they have sixty-five cemeteries and are laying wreaths at approximately two thousand four hundred-plus grave sites. This program here is a national program that has been going on for a few years in post five fifteen. Under the, the rest of the commander has really been all in. He does a really good job of that, and if you can, if you're not busy, I would suggest once you leave the toy drive, head down to the cemetery. It's a great program. I went down there last year, I really had a good time. My next comment is, you know, it's Christmas, and I like Christmas. I love Christmas. When Thanksgiving starts, it just seems like... When Thanksgiving starts, it just seems like everybody's a little bit nicer, everybody's a little bit more tolerant, everybody's a little bit more understanding. And I just wish that sometimes we could take our energy and enthusiasm that we have during the holidays and, and bottle it up and use it all year round, because if we could do that all year round. I used to tell folks, one of my objectives in life, when I was growing up, on Easter Sunday, you know, your mom, dad then went out and bought you a brand-new Easter suit, and you want to take a million pictures. You want to take a million pictures, because your self-confidence is through the roof, you feel like you can do anything. And I always said that I wanted to feel that way all year round, and I think that if, if our city and our county could do that year round, to have that spirit of giving and caring and understanding and compassion, there's no telling where our city and county could go. And my last comment, I always sit up here and I talk about our youth. I talk about our youth, I talk about the Navy ROTC, I talk about the Coffee High Trojans, all our athletes. We talk about our, our Parks and Recreation, the, the number of kids that come through there every, every year is just amazing. And you know, I have some mayor stuff to do on Friday, but I was headed to Atlanta to support the mighty Trojans. I actually never left the city of Douglas by the time that they counseled it, and most people say that we were going up there for a football game. I disagree with that. I think we were going up there for a family reunion. I think we were going up there, there was family and friends coming from all over this country. I talked to one young man, he had a friend that was actually flying from Frankfurt, Germany to come to this game. It may, the, the reason that we were, were gathering was a football game, but I think that the outcome of it was, was going to be something magnificent. And as we get ready to journey over to Lee, I am supremely confident that, you know, our plan was to play up there in the Mercedes-Benz Stadium. That wasn't God's plan, just wasn't his plan. I think that this week allows our offensive lineman to get a little healthier, our running backs to get a little healthier. I think it provides our coaches an opportunity to go over that game plan again, come up with another beautiful play as they did up there in Tucker. How many people were fooled on that play? The touchdown play. Touchdown play was absolutely magnificent. So I think that as the mayor of the city of Douglas, you know, I sit in this chair to represent us, all the citizens of Douglas, but I think that some of the greatest ambassadors that we have are not even old enough to vote. I think that those young men and women that put on that, that C on their chest or on that cow, or they have that Douglas Parks and Recreation are able to reach farther than what we are as elected officials, because they travel all over this state of ours, representing us, and I think that they're some of our greatest ambassadors, and I really and truly believe that on Friday, our ambassadors, the band, the cheerleaders, the coaches, the football players, and our fans, we're going to go to Lee County and we're going to represent the Coffee High Trojans the way that the Coffee High Trojans are supposed to be recognized. And if you go on Facebook and you see at the end of the Tucker game, a Tucker player was, was disheartened that he had lost, but you saw our Trojans over there providing comfort. That's the act of a champion. That's the way that champions act. If our football players are going to act like champions, I think that we ought to follow our ambassador's lead. When we go to Lee County, we will act like champions, and I just really and truly believe in my heart that our Trojans are going to come back victorious and we are going to have us a time. We are going to have a time. And I just can't say enough the respect that I have for Dr. Lees, the board members out there, the Board of Education, the principals, the educators, the teachers. Y'all do a very taunting job sometimes, and I just want you to know as the mayor of the city of Douglas, I am greatly appreciative of the time that you invest in our children. And that concludes my comments. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's been motioned second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. We stand adjourned.
Alright.